Remotely working, then I would like to, number one, like I said, welcome you. But then also, I would like to thank Ryan Luckett for being here tonight and giving us this overview on the budget. So I'm just gonna go ahead and cut to the chase, let Ryan take it over. I will let you know, we, bless you, we have a hard stop at 6:30. So I think that we'll have plenty of time to discuss the topic, but if we need more, we can always accommodate that. Mr. Luckett?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen here. Everyone see that okay? Okay, great. Well, as the mayor said, we are here this afternoon to talk about the first quarter budget review. We have a few things on the agenda this afternoon. We're gonna be providing a brief economic overview, just to kind of give you a snapshot of how things are going, both nationally and locally. We're gonna be talking about our city budget and give you an update on our revenues and expenditures. We have some budget requests in terms of new spending from departments, so I'm gonna share those with you this evening. And then we'll talk about next steps as we move forward. Just to kind of give everybody a little bit of background on why we're here and what's been going on during this time of the last few months. As you might remember, back during the budget process for FY 2021, typically our budget process begins in January. That process was nearly complete when the pandemic began. And of course, the impact of the pandemic drastically changed our projections and expected revenues and expenditures. And staff did have to go back and kind of revamp those things so that we could put together a budget that was conservative and balanced, knowing that we didn't know a lot at that point. And so because of that, there were a lot of spending requests, typical things, maintenance type items, and new spending requests, new operating initiatives that were unfunded or deferred, because there was so much uncertainty at the time. So because of that, you know, we did plan on coming back to you all on a quarterly basis to give you an idea of how things are going, as well as to potentially fund or request funding for some of those items that were deferred. Just to kind of give you an order of magnitude here, so as you might remember, operating wise, there were about $4.1 million in requests that were unfunded. Maintenance capital, about $7.1 million that went unfunded. And one-time capital of $21 million, million, that was unfunded. So we're gonna start by giving everyone just an economic update. The first item we're gonna look at is employment. So this is looking at it at the national level. This slide is a little different than what you had in your packet, because we were able to get the most up-to-date information today on how initial unemployment claims were looking. And so because of that, there were some revisions actually in the data by the Department of Labor over the last few weeks. And so because of those revisions, new weekly unemployment claims for October are actually down to their lowest level since the pandemic began back in March. So that's a little bit of good news there. That was about 787,000 new weekly claims as of the week ending October 17th. And just to give you an idea, so pre-pandemic levels are at about $695,000 in weekly claims. For the state of Georgia, statewide, and this, the state provides information on a monthly basis, so it's not as, not quite as up-to-date as what the national data shows. But for the state of Georgia, statewide, initial unemployment claims for the month of September were lower than August by about 18 and a half percent. If we're looking at specifically Fulton County, the drop was even greater. So our claims, initial claims dropped by about 27% from August. Statewide, in September, there was a net gain of 20,000 jobs, about half a percent compared to August. And if we're looking at the Atlanta metropolitan statistical area, that specific area saw a net gain of about 15,000 jobs from August to September. This slide shows you the Atlanta MSA, the number of people employed. And so you can see that there is some growth, as I mentioned, from August to September. That growth has slowed somewhat. The next slide here shows you the unemployment rate for the state of Georgia as a whole. So you can see here that while we've seen reductions, there was a slight uptick in the unemployment rate from August to September. Another important component of kind of measuring our economic health is consumer spending and income. And so I'm gonna give you some information on that as well. Overall, personal income fell about 2.7% in August, which is the latest month that we have information for. A lot of that, where part of that is due in part to the decline in federal aid. Another important component also is consumer confidence. That rose to the highest level in September since before the pandemic. And so you can see on this chart that we have on the slide here. This line shows you the personal income. This uptick that you see here was a result of the federal aid that got passed once the pandemic began. And then obviously, on the spending side, you see the drastic reduction in spending nationally during the time of lockdowns. Talking about overall consumer spending, there was a decrease in overall consumer spending of about 1% in August. That was a slower, I'm sorry, a spending increase of about 1% in August. That was a slower increase than in July. And then retail sales, which is one component of overall consumer spending, did rise about 1.9% in September. And so far, it's actually surpassed the pre-pandemic levels. That was back in June when it actually surpassed the pre-pandemic level. And this chart shows you here, breaks that down a little bit for you. So you can see the two blue lines, both represent durable and non-durable goods. And you can see that those have recovered and actually have surpassed where they were. Really, it's the services, the spending on service you can see is not quite recovered. It's recovering, but hasn't gotten back to pre-pandemic levels. And then you can see the gold line represents the level of savings, personal savings. The next couple of slides, wanted to just provide some perspective on, you know, what the expectations are moving forward. And this is information from the Wall Street Journal Economic Forecasting Survey. So they do a monthly survey of about 60 different economists on several different economic indicators. And we're just providing a couple of those survey results to you. The first one was had to do with jobs. And so the question was, when do you expect payrolls to recover to the peak level last seen in February 2020? And you can see that the bulk of those economists are expecting 2022 to 2023 as seeing a full recovery in jobs. The next one had to do with gross domestic product. The question was, when do you expect gross domestic product to recover to the level seen in the fourth quarter of 2019? And you can see that most of them are projecting that to come around, you know, quarter three of 2021. Most of them in the quarter four of 2021, but there's a, quite a bit also in the first quarter of 2022. So overall, just some things to take away from, you know, what we're seeing in the news. You know, the economic recovery has surpassed general expectations, but it does appear to be slowing somewhat. Consumer spending is still below overall pre-pandemic levels. You know, we know that there's been a lot of talk about additional federal aid, but that hasn't happened yet. And so because of the decline in federal aid, we are seeing the impact in unemployment and consumer income. And just job growth and recovery in general, while it's recovered somewhat, that recovery process is slowing. So that's it for our economic update, and we wanted to move on now to our just budget update. And we're gonna start by looking at our general fund revenues. As of the monthly budget report that we provided to Mayor Council at the August 2020 committee meeting, I was, sorry, this was as of the August 2020 activity. Our revenues were about $716,000 higher than our projections, and this is in the general fund. That was primarily due to sales tax. Budget staff has reviewed major revenues for the first quarter to determine if adjustments were needed in FY 2021. And we're gonna talk about a few of those recommendations now. The first recommendation has to do with sales tax. Sales tax collections have improved dramatically since the pandemic began. And you can see here that this is for the month of activity. So in February, even before really, you know, a lot of the lockdowns and things began, February, we're already seeing decline. The lowest point came from our activity in April, where our biggest drop in sales tax collections was about 30% less than the prior year. From that point forward, we've seen some improvement, quite a bit of improvement, when you compare what we've received that month to the prior year. And it's been on a continuing improving trend up until the month of August, our last available month that we have available. July was about 7% lower than the prior year. August had a little bit of a tick down, so we were back to about 9.2% less than the prior year. We should be receiving our sales tax collections for the month of September tomorrow or the next day. So we'll have that information here shortly, and we'll send that out to everyone as soon as it becomes available. So the August activity, as I said here, indicates some potential slowdown in the recovery process. But overall, if we're just looking at the first quarter, and we're estimating for the month of September at this point, but if we're just looking for the first quarter, sales tax collections for the first quarter are estimated about $1 million higher than projections, which is quite a bit of improvement over what we anticipated back during the budget process. Back, you know, when we came up with these projections, that was basically the month of April. So right at the beginning of all this, and not a lot was known at the time. So we were planning on, you know, about a 20% drop in sales tax revenue. So fortunate that things have not been as, as bad as we had, as expected. This slide gives you just a picture of how our sales tax revenues have come in over the last year. So this line shows you our FY 2020 actual sales tax collections. And you can see, again, that decline as the pandemic began, the low point in April, and how we did have some recovery those last few months. This orange line provides you with our projection for the current fiscal year. And then the red line here shows you where we've been for the first couple of months of FY 2021. Next slide shows you, just some, it's a kind of a busy slide here, but it shows you year-over-year change in sales tax collections by commodity type. So these commodity types are actually provided by the state of Georgia, the Department of Revenue. This is kind of the, the most detailed level of data that they provide to us. So it's still at a high level, and we don't have a lot beyond this. But I thought it was interesting to show you just how some of the different sectors are of our economy in terms of the ones that collect sales tax at least, how they're functioning. And you can see here, this, the percents that you see on the far right show you the latest month, so the month of September, how that compares to September of the prior year. So, you know, we know that our hotels have been hit especially hard. And even as of September, they're still about 63% below the prior year. Some of the different sectors, general merchandise, as you can see, they're about 110% of the prior year, so doing better than the prior year. Moving on to property tax, we talked some about this during the time when we went through our millerate adoption process. But the 2020 Property Tax Digest was certified by the state back in September. And we received the approved final digest in mid-September. The appeals resulted in $84 million in unbilled assessed value. That was higher than what we had anticipated. That was offset somewhat by our exemptions being a little bit less than what we had anticipated. So our final exemption amounts, and this is the amount that someone's assessed value was lowered by, they came in at about $637 million in assessed value. That equates to a tax savings to our residents of about $3.2 million in taxes. The 637 million in assessed value, that's equivalent to about 10% of our total digest. So because appeals did come in a little bit higher than what we anticipated, our variance, our negative variance that we'd already talked about during the millerate adoption process did increase by about $50,000. So we are recommending a reduction in our property tax revenues of about $600,000. And just to kind of recap for those that may not remember, those that weren't present at the time. So when it came to our property tax digest during the budget process, we had anticipated about a 7% growth in our commercial digest and ended up seeing about a 3% decline in our sales tax, I'm sorry, in our commercial digest. So that is the explanation for the, the property taxes coming in below our budget. The next revenue source I wanted to mention was our hotel motel tax. So as you know, our hotel motel tax is accounted for in a separate fund, but a portion of those hotel motel tax proceeds are transferred to our general fund. And our revenue in the hotel motel taxes is not recovering as quickly as we had projected. We, we worked with the Roswell CBB and Andy Williams to just kind of discuss revenues and, you know, what's going on in that industry. Basically, you know, things are just not as improving, are improving as, as quickly as they had anticipated. The regulations on group size and just the overall lack of confidence when it comes to travel is really impacting the industry. A lot, some of the group business that they, that are seeing, that it is coming back, but it's typically much smaller. And we're talking about, Andy gave an example of, you know, what you might see is a 200-person wedding might be 20 people today. So that's really impacting our hotel motel tax revenues, because not as many rooms are needed. The other big piece of that is that corporations are, you know, embracing a work-from-home mentality. And so they've suspended a lot of their travel, which is also having a huge impact. One of the other pieces is that to the hotels themselves, to try and encourage additional business, have reduced their roommate, room rates. And so some hotel occupancy levels have dropped to the single digits, even though they've been offering 30, 35% off, you know, from their typical rates. So because of that, our hotel motel tax collections are trending about 40% below our projections for the first quarter. Our FY 2021 general fund budget did anticipate a transfer in from our hotel motel fund of about $400,000. So to account for this decrease, we are recommending a reduction in this revenue source, our budget of about $50,000. So overall, this table gives you a summary of the recommended operating revenue adjustments for the general fund. And I did want to point out, you're gonna see this several times throughout the presentation. We've divided out our recurring revenues versus our one-time revenue sources, just because we want to make sure that, you know, if we have recurring or one-time available revenue to utilize for additional expenses, we want to make sure that we're using those resources for things that match up with the nature of the particular revenue. So we wouldn't want to use a one-time revenue to fund an additional position, for instance. So that's kind of why we're showing you this, this breakdown. So just to summarize, we are recommending a reduction in our property tax revenues of $600,000. A reduction in our hotel motel tax transfer in of 50,000. An increase in our sales tax revenue budget, and this is just based on the first quarter only, of $1 million. And then this last line, we haven't spoken about yet, but you'll see it a couple other times in our presentation this evening. As you might remember, during the budget process, the council approved a lease purchase of a, our IT switch replacement project. So that involved us obtaining financing. And so that project actually came in lower. There were some savings associated with that project. So we're also counting for that. So this is showing the reduction in the loan proceeds for that particular project. So when we take all these things into account, you can see that we are recommending a net revenue increase of $210,000. Moving on to general fund expenditures. As of the August 2020 monthly budget report, our expenditures were in line with our projected amounts. Departments were projected to spend about $12.3 million through August. Actual expenditures were 10.4 million. We have reviewed these expenditures with departments to recommend to you all some amounts for reallocation in FY 2021. And I'll walk you through those items next. The first item we wanted to mention had to do with training, education, and related travel. We asked departments to submit their training and related travel needs for July through December. And those trainings designated as essential, we left funding in their budget to help fund those essential trains. And then anything that remained in the budget for the first half of the year, we are recommending for reallocation. And so what that results in is about $160,000, or 60% of that budget for the first six months, we are recommending for reallocation. And the reason we only looked at the first six months, there's a lot of unknowns, obviously, about the second half of our fiscal year. So we didn't want to really touch those dollars until our departments knew more about what their needs might be for that second half of the fiscal year. So this table gives you a summary of those adjustments. And so just to kind of walk you through it, so for all departments, the approved budget for July through December totals $239,000. The essential needs that departments had totaled about $107,000. And so that, that left about $132,000 that we are recommending for allocation. Another piece here that we wanted to provide for your information, and it's up to the council, if you all want to move forward with this reallocation, but there is about $28,000 in travel and training in the mayor and council budget. And if the mayor and council wanted to move forward with that, we could reallocate that to other needs as well. But that would be obviously up to you all. If you decide to move forward with that, that's where we get the full amount, the $161,000 that can be reallocated for other needs. The next big thing that we looked at in terms of expenditures had to do with personnel. So we looked at all of our personnel expenditures for the first quarter. And we are recommending some reallocation of any vacancy savings that we saw just for the first quarter. And so that includes about $100,000 in full-time salary savings due to vacancies, $30,000 in part-time savings. And then we have an adjustment to our, our defined benefit pension budget. And that would be a savings of $37,000. So total personnel savings we're recommending of a little over $167,000. There were also a few other items. The GFO loan deferral, so as you might remember, GFO, which is the state agency that we've obtained some financing through, as a way to assist local governments, they provided a six-month loan deferral. And so this applies to our loans that we have to, for the seven branches property. So that equates to a one-time savings of $190,000. Our court services contract was recently rebid, and that resulted in savings of $25,000. As you, as I'm sure you know, a lot of our special events have been canceled due to the pandemic. And so Recreation Parks Department is offering up about $20,000 in savings due to those cancellations. And then this is the expenditure side of what we talked about with the IT switch project savings. So savings of about $139,000. So overall, this table summarizes all of our recommended changes to expenditures. And as you can see, we have about a little over $704,000 in recommended expenditure adjustments, meaning we're actually recommending to reduce our expenditure budget by $704,000. So next, we'll move on to review some of the operating requests that we've received from departments for the first quarter. Just to give you some information about how the process kind of works over the last month or so, departments did take a look at their immediate needs in conjunction with some of those items that were unfunded during the budget process, and they submitted those funding requests to us. Budget staff, we met with the city administrator and department heads to determine those final recommendations. And then finally, we also met with the mayor to review those first quarter recommendations. So to summarize what we have available to go towards these funding recommendations, this is what we've already talked about, but just at a high level. So we have a net increase in revenue of $210,000. And then we have a net decrease in expenditures of $704,000, which gives us a total available for reallocation of $914,000. I do want to point out, this is just kind of current year budget savings and additional revenues. This does not include any general fund fund balance or savings from FY 2020. We are currently going through our year-end closeout process, and our audit is close to wrapping up. So we're expecting to have more information for you all in terms of savings from the prior year and any additional fund balance. We should have that in the next week or so, and we'll be glad to share that as soon as it becomes available. So next, to walk through some of the requests that we've received from departments, and these are the ones that we are showing as funded as we move through this. First, from the administration department, there's funding for the operation and maintenance of the security system. This would be recurring, and this would be really establishing a budget to fund the operating and maintenance needs they have of $10,000. Next, community development is requesting a full-time building plans reviewer position. This is, the funding requested is, you know, the percent of the year that is left that would be needed for that position. But this position fulfills the demand that they are experiencing today in terms of plans review. And they do expect this demand to continue. And today, they only have one reviewer to handle that load. Next is our fire department. There, it's the safety item, they're requesting funding for replacement of fire vehicle communication headsets in the amount of $67,000. And then the police department is requesting funding for the replacement of tourniquets that have reached their end of life. And this would also be a one-time expenditure of $15,000. Also, just wanted to point out as we go through this, if there are additional questions, we have all the departments on hand, and they, they'll be glad to go into any details in terms of these requests. Next, we have the Recreation and Parks Department, and they have four funded items. The first is to increase funding for janitorial services for their public facilities. And this is tied to, you know, everything going on with pandemic. So this would be $168,000 request. They are requesting increased funding for holiday lighting and tree placement for historic Roswell Town Square in the amount of $23,000. Increased funding for supplies to maintain parks, trails, and equipment of $30,000. And then the final item is an increase in funding for contract services. This includes things This includes things like elevator maintenance, pool filtration, and mat maintenance, and that's the amount of $10,000. I'll also point out that some of these dollar amounts that you see here are really just the department's immediate needs. So there is a chance that as we move through this year, and we come back to you at second quarter at mid-year, you'll see these same items, but if there are additional needs, there may be additional funding requested at that time. The next few slides give you a summary of what was requested but unfunded for the first quarter. So in administration, we had a community engagement program position. We also had funding for building maintenance, building operations maintenance. We had funding for security for part-time and overtime for events and meetings. In community development, we had funding for codifying UDC text amendments, funding for a part-time code enforcement officer position, and then funding for a new leased vehicle for the engineering division. In the fire department, we had, again, this is unfunded, one position in the fire marshal's office, funding for lockers at headquarters, and funding for fire safety public service announcement. So that wraps up all of the unfunded items that were submitted for the operating budget. The next few slides are some other, what we call other policy considerations that we wanted to bring to the council to get some guidance on moving forward. One has to do with the use of reserves. So just to kind of recap this, during the FY 2021 approved budget, it did include the use of reserves to balance the operating budget of about $458,000. And just to clarify, when I say the use of reserves, these are reserves that existed above our emergency fund of 25%. So we never touched the 25% emergency fund. But to balance the budget in FY 2021, we did utilize some of our reserves to do that. Our city budget principles, you know, that we operate on, and as well as best practice when it comes to budgeting, you know, dictate that our general fund operating expenses, you know, should be funded with operating or recurring revenues. And we did make an exception to that when the budget was recommended and approved for FY 2021, mainly due to the uncertainty surrounding the pandemic, the timing, the lack of timing that we had when it came to redoing the budget and getting it to you all for consideration. So we did want to just remind you of that and, you know, let you know that funds are available in the first quarter to replenish those reserve funds, if that's the direction we want to move. The next policy consideration we wanted to point out deals with employee compensation. And we just wanted to point out again that the FY 2021 budget did not include any increases for employee compensation. If that's something that the council wanted to consider at this point, or later down the road, you know, we have a couple options, whether that be a merit increase, one-time compensation. But we did want to get some feedback and direction on that. And the feasibility of each of these options really depends upon, obviously, available funding and the nature of that funding. In other words, we wouldn't want to fund a continuing merit increase with one-time revenues, kind of going back to that one-time versus recurring revenue discussion that we had earlier. So at this time, there is no recommendation included in the numbers, but we have options, and we'll be glad to provide that information to you for whatever questions that you have. Another one of the policy considerations that we wanted to point out has to do with our partner organizations. So as you know, they also took a reduction in their funding that they received from the city during the FY 2021 approved budget. Their budgets were reduced from the prior year levels. We did provide an opportunity for our partner organizations to submit funding requests for consideration during the first quarter budget review. And this kind of gives you a summary of what happened during the budget process, what was funded, what was unfunded, and then what requests we have received. So you can see, all of our partner organizations did receive some level of funding. The unfunded column here shows you in comparison to their post-COVID requests. So again, they had already submitted their requests before the pandemic began. Once we knew we had to make some changes, we gave them the opportunity to revise their submissions. And then that's what this is based on. So if you compare what was approved to their post-COVID requests, you can see the arts fund had a reduction of $170,000. The historic Roswell purification project had a reduction of $5,500. And the other organizations also, although they were funded at what they requested post-COVID, is quite a bit lower than what they initially requested as well. We received one request from one partner organization, that was the Roswell Arts Fund. They are requesting $62,000 for this first quarter for consideration. And we've provided you that information down at the bottom here. So they've requested $40,000 to move forward with the 2021 Art Around Roswell program. And they've also asked for $22,000 to fund a public art manager position. And the details of both of these requests are also in your packet. So again, here, there is no recommendation included in our numbers at this time regarding this, but we're looking for guidance on moving forward with this. So to summarize, our operating requests and available funding. So as I mentioned already, we have about $914,000 available for reallocation. Those funded department operating requests that we showed you earlier total about $375,000. Allocate about $80,000 to capital projects. And then we are showing that we have enough funding to replenish those reserve funds and have a zero remaining balance at the end. I also wanted to point out our general fund reserve by policy, the 25% is still intact. So we're maintaining a little over $18 million as an emergency reserve. And as you might remember, during the 2021 budget process, we also recommended setting aside about $1.6 million in what we call just a reserve for financial uncertainty to deal with uncertainties as we move forward. Next, we wanted to get into our first quarter budget request related to capital. And again, here, we went back and looked at our revenues and expenditures to see what we had available and what adjustments were needed. So the first table at the top here goes over our revenue adjustments. So we are recommending a net decrease in our revenues for capital projects of about $60,000. The first part of that is the reduction in loan proceeds. So we've seen it in the general fund, and it also carries over to our capital projects fund, so that's why you're seeing it again here. And then additionally, you see the increase in revenue, the $80,000 I mentioned on the previous slide. So that gives us a net revenue decrease of $59,000. At the bottom here on the expenditure side, we are recommending adjustments, a net decrease of $1.2 million. First, we have the expenditure side of the IT switch project savings again. And then we have a little over $1 million of project funds that we're recommending for reallocation. And we'll go over the details of where that number comes from in just a few minutes. So overall, then, the revenue decrease and the expenditure decrease gives us a net total available of $1.1 million to devote to capital projects. So we'll start with our maintenance capital request, the funded items. And so these are items that we're recommending for funding. In the administration department, we have our facilities maintenance program. The original request in the 2021 approved budget was about $2.5 million. And we're recommending to fund about $544,000 of that in the first, or at this first quarter review. For Recreation and Parks, we're recommending trail repair funding in the amount of $50,000, light pole replacement of $50,000, and $88,000 to go towards the Recreation and Parks, just general maintenance program. For transportation, we're recommending $254,000 be added to the road resurfacing program. So about $250,000 was funded in the approved budget. This $254,000 is in addition to that. And this specifically will be the match that is required to accept the L-MID grant. Next, you see zero-turn mower replacement, $14,000, and then bridge maintenance and safety program funding of $50,000. Other funded items for community developments, we're recommending funding of I-Plan Table Workstations or some sort of digital equipment, digital equivalent. And this would enable them to utilize it for online plan review. The police department is requesting funding for ballistic shields for uniform patrol in the amount of $30,000. They're also requesting a long-distance weapon platform upgrade, $21,600. Recreation and Parks Department, this is exterior door replacement at the BJ CAB of $21,000. And then for the Transportation Department, replacement of a heavy-duty concrete mixer at $6,000. So all of these items, we're, again, we're showing as recommended for funding. In terms of items that are unfunded or not recommended for funding, we have a $5,000 request for historic house maintenance for Recreation and Parks. And then for the Fire Department, an EMS utility terrain vehicle replacement of $25,600. Also shown as unfunded, this would be the administration department, and this would be the installation of cameras for city hall parking areas, as well as security upgrade at Hembry for gates and their entrances. And the Fire Department, not funded currently, would be land acquisition for Station 2 replacement, as well as a lighting upgrade for various fire stations. So to summarize, we have, again, recommended revenue adjustments, a net decrease of $59,000, a net expenditure decrease of $1.2 million. So that gives us $1.1 million available for reallocation. We've recommended a little over $1 million in maintenance capital requests, and a little over $100,000 in one-time capital requests to use up all of that available funding. Next, we wanted to get into our other funds and give you a quick update on how they're doing and some of the requests that we've received from those departments. Solid Waste Fund, again, this is based off our August monthly budget report. Our revenues are in line with our projections, expenditures. Actual expenditures are less than projections, so everything is going well in this fund. In terms of funding requests, the department is requesting a part-time position funding for a support services position in the amount of $40,000, as well as a decrease relating to position allocation changes. So just to clarify what this means, so Environment and Public Works has a support services division, as well as a few other positions that are allocated among the various enterprise funds that they are responsible for. This is requesting a change in how those positions are allocated based on the time they spend in those particular funds. Maintenance Capital, they're requesting a commercial front loader garbage truck replacement in the amount of $284, and a recycling center semi-trailer replacement program of $6,500. And then in terms of one-time capital requests, they are requesting to replace the baler at the recycling center in the amount of $200,000. And currently, all of these items can be funded within the Solid Waste Fund. Next is our water and sewer funds. Here, our revenues are coming in a little bit less than what our projections were. This is primarily due to the timing associated with new water meters from new construction. Otherwise, our water charges themselves are doing fine. Our expenditures are within our projections. And just a reminder too, this fund is also affected by the GFA loan deferral that I mentioned earlier. So that equates to a one-time savings in that fund of a little over $400,000. And the department is recommending to allocate that funding for various projects within that fund, and we'll talk about those next. In terms of operating requests, the department, again, is requesting part-time funding for a support services position. This is the water fund portion of the one we mentioned earlier. They're also asking for one full-time water construction backflow specialist position. And then they're also requesting position allocation changes. Again, what we discussed before, it would be an increase of about $5,000. Maintenance Capital requests, the department is requesting additional water line replacement funding of $335,000, as well as a service truck replacement costing $140,000. And then in terms of one-time capital requests, the department is requesting backflow improvements of $87,000, interconnection improvements of $64,000, water plant improvements of $53,000, and well site improvements of $73,000. All of the requests in their one-time capital, as well as $135,000 of this water line replacement funding, makes up how the department is recommending to use that GFA, one-time GFA loan savings that I mentioned earlier. Next is our stormwater fund update, and you can see here that our actual revenues are exceeding our projections. Expenditures are within our projected amounts. In terms of requests for the stormwater fund, again, position allocation changes, and this would be a decrease of $12,000. And then for maintenance capital, the department is requesting an additional $550,000 for the stormwater master project list, and then $25,000 in large equipment replacement. Finally, in our fleet fund funded items, again, this is one other position allocation change. This would be an increase of $27,000. And then the last one we wanted to provide you an update with was our Recreation Participation Fund. As you might imagine, this fund has been impacted quite a bit just because of the pandemic and the decrease in programs. In terms of the August monthly budget report, you can see that our actual revenues are quite a bit lower than what we projected. And then our expenditures are also quite a bit lower than projected. So the department is doing a great job of managing and staying within the revenues they're collecting. So you can see our actual revenues are less than our, I'm sorry, our actual expenditures are less than our actual revenues. We are working together with the Recreation and Parks Department to closely monitor our revenues and expenditures. And based on everything we're seeing at this point, we're not recommending any adjustments at this time. So the last section of our presentation has to do with the capital project freeze, and I'll just give you an update on that. So as you might remember, the mayor and council approved a resolution temporarily freezing certain capital projects back in June 2020. That resolution and the freeze expired on September 30th, 2020. We've met with departments to discuss their needs for the upcoming quarter, and we do recommend the continuation of the freeze for certain projects. And this table gives you a summary overall of what that looks like. So out of all the capital projects, we have about $6 million in available budget. We are recommending to continue freezing just less than about $4 million of that. We're recommending to reallocate about a little over $1 million and to unfreeze about $1.1 million for these projects to move forward. And let me switch over to that detail page real quick so I can kind of show you some of the details. Everyone see that okay? So we've split this up by department, so this is similar to the way that you saw it last time. So for administration, we are recommending to continue freezing two projects, would be the we are recommending to continue freezing two projects would be the ADA study that was approved by Council and FY19, I believe, FY20? Is that FY20? As well as the LED lighting retrofit program. We're recommending to reallocate about $55,000. This is savings from the class and compensation study that Council approved, as well as space renovation funding that is left over. And then we're recommending to unfreeze funding associated with facilities maintenance. This was existing funding that was already there, as well as a portion of that ADA project that was used for specific projects, not the study. For Community Development, we're recommending to continue freezing funding for the Water Resource Map update, as well as remaining funding, but unspent funding for the Comprehensive Plan 2040 update. So this is, has nothing to do with the project that is ongoing at this point. This is remaining funding that was unneeded because it came in under budget. We are, we're also recommending to reallocate $120,000 in existing funding. That would be $70,000 in savings from the Urban Redevelopment Plan, as well as $50,000. And this, I'll point this out, this was for the Economic Development Review that was approved a couple of years ago. And Council had, had asked that that money be set aside at a meeting in the last year. And we would recommend reallocating those funds to other capital needs in the city. So I did want to point that out because that had been a specific request from the Council. We're also recommending to unfreeze $200,000 for the Historic District Property Map update so that project can move forward. And we're also recommending to unfreeze $20,000 related to the comp plan that would fund the racial equity study that was discussed at the committee meeting most recently. For the Fire Department's, we are recommending to continue freezing about $90,000, which includes $50,000 for the Fire Station 5 remodel, $40,000 in fire gear lockers, and we're requesting to unfreeze $47,000 so that they can move, the Fire Department can move forward with a portion of that remodel project at Fire Station 5. For the Police Department's, we are recommending to reallocate $150,000 that was designated towards the 911 Emergency Center, the new center design. This does not impact this project at all in terms of it moving forward. Basically, this project still has funding available within impact fees. So we're just recommending to reallocate this portion that is a little more flexible in terms of what it can be used for. But that project would still, would still move on as planned. For Recreation and Parks, we're recommending to continue freezing about $200,000, almost $300,000 in projects. That would be the Cemetery Improvements, Grove Way Community Master Plan and Landscape Improvement Plan. We're recommending to reallocate remaining funding from the development of the Riverwalk. And then we're recommending to unfreeze $255,000 for the Old Mill Park Trail Wall replacement and nearly $4,000 for the Landscape Improvement Plan. For Transportation, we are recommending to continue freezing about $1.2 million worth of projects. That includes $250,000 for the Howells Road Multi-Use Path, $380,000 for the Highway 9 Connectivity Project, $575,000 in sidewalk connectivity, and $26,000 related to the Woodstock Road at Highway 92 Turn Lane. We are recommending to reallocate in the Transportation Department about $371,000. That includes funding that was set aside to start the project development for the Old Ellis or Sun Valley Phase 2 project. It includes remaining funding for Sun Valley Phase 3. And then finally, $293,000 from the Historic Gateway Project. As you might remember, Council approved the $2.5 million for final design. That design amount came in a little, or came in less than what was budgeted. So we are recommending to reallocate those leftover funds or unused funds to other projects. And then we are recommending to unfreeze $260,000 in sidewalk connectivity projects and then $19,000 related to the Turn Lane at Keengroove. And then finally, on the citywide, we are recommending to continue freezing $1.8 million. That consists of $200,000 in capital contingency, $1.6 million in vehicle replacement funding. And then we are recommending to reallocate $199,000 from that contingency project, as well as the $100,000 in capital that we have for matching grant fund contingency. That doesn't affect, we also have $100,000 in operating for our matching grant fund as well. So overall, we are, again, as I mentioned, recommending $3.9 million to remain frozen, a little over a million dollars to be reallocated, $1.1 million to be unfrozen for those projects to move forward. There was also $58,000 in funding just from projects that are completed and they had leftover funding available. So the 1.1, I'm sorry, the 1.029 recommended to be reallocated, plus the 58, gets us to the 1.088 that I mentioned on the previous slide of what we have available to go towards capital projects. I'll go back to the presentation and wrap things up. Can everyone see the presentation now? So in terms of next steps, we are requesting feedback and guidance on these first quarter budget recommendations. That includes our revenue and expenditure adjustments, the department budget requests that we reviewed, those other policy consideration items, as well as the capital project freeze that we just finished talking about. We are talking about moving forward if Council is ready to move forward. We would request Council action at the November 9th meeting in the form of a budget amendment based on whichever direction we receive from you all. So with that, I will end the presentation and we'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Does Council have any questions? Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, one thing that would be of great help to me, and I understand that it's difficult to do. If it would be possible for you, General Fund, Operating and Maintenance, to give us a forecast of what we think might be the full year so that we can get a better understanding of what might turn up. And, and, and I understand that, you know, you don't know what sales tax is going to be, but perhaps you could forecast that out at the, the 9% number where we are today. And, and just give us some flavor with a, you know, with a, an upside downside so that we'd know, you know, what, what, what it might look like, you know, through the end of the year.
Sure, we can do that.
Councilmember Judy.
Lot of information there, Ryan. Thank you for putting all that together. Didn't look like it was easy. On the transportation, this might be for Mohammed or you. I didn't see, I, I, from speaking earlier regarding the Hawk signal crossing Highway 9, I believe that we, I heard that was frozen along with some other projects. Is that in there? Because I didn't see it listed directly.
It was frozen, and it was in the list that we showed. It's labeled the Highway 9 Connectivity Project. And that's one of the ones that we've shown as recommended to remain frozen. But if, you know, Council has a different direction, we can certainly move that direction.
Thank you.
So I, I can add a little bit more to what Ryan just said. So the, we are very hopeful that we can bring a construction contract for that Hawk by January 2021 Committee, so just in a couple of months. It's just that since we are not the only agency that's involved, we have GDOT who's also involved, they've been good to work with so far on that. We hope to get the necessary approvals by, actually very sooner than January, and then advertise it for bids. And when we bring it to the committee, hopefully in January, in a couple of months, we would include the request to unfreeze the funds, you know, for the Council to make the decision. That was the plan. We didn't want to unfreeze the funds now because when others are involved, we're just never sure. So we just didn't want to tie up the money and not have it ready. But we are hopeful that it will be ready.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed, for the information. Also, thank you, Ryan. I appreciate all of the hard work you've done. Councilmember Clairewell.
Mr. Luckett, great presentation, detailed presentation as always, so thank you. I, I have a couple of high-level questions and then a couple of detailed questions. So from a, from a high-level standpoint, I guess, first of all, I, I saw in the packet you included this summary. Are you, can you send us that, that detail that you just walked through for the frozen projects? Is that something you can email us?
Yes, I can, but that should be in your Council packet, but I'll double-check it.
Yes, I know on packet page 62 is where the summary was, and, and maybe I just missed the detail. So, but if, if it's not in there, if you could just provide the detail.
You can do that.
And then, and then, so it's my understanding, on November 9th, you're, you're requesting that basically any budget amendments come forward on the 9th. Is that also where you're anticipating we would be voting on the, on the project freeze list? Is, is that what you're thinking?
That, that was the plan, is that it would kind of all be one action by, one agenda item, I guess, at least by Council.
Okay, makes sense. And then, as I, as I start the real high level and get a little more detailed. So with that money that's allocated, so the available budget that's, that's been allocated. So if something is reallocated, so hypothetically, if there's a, there's a available budget of, let's say, $1 million. And that $1 million, this Council decides they actually want to really reallocate to something completely different, assuming it's not coming for impact fees or something along those lines. So that, that is something that would, that, is that something that would require a separate cut? Or is basically by, by taking it from that project, that is the cut?
The, the dollar amount that we're recommending for reallocation is, you know, is reducing those specific projects. But then in turn, it's also funding all the capital projects that we went over as well. So that's where that funding for those new capital projects is coming from.
Right, and let me just rephrase it. So let's say you have, and I'm just gonna, I like using even numbers. So if you have a recommendation and Council, and Council ends up supporting it, where you're taking $100,000 from the available budget from one of the frozen projects and move that $100,000 to a different project, to a capital project, not in that list. And that is the, that is the add and the delete, right? So it's basically, we're deleting from the available budget that's already been approved, already been allocated, and we're moving it to this other capital project that has not been funded and approved. Is, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And, okay, and so that answers that question. And then now, two questions that get much more detailed. So one of them is, so the loan proceeds, basically that reduction because of the savings on the computer switch side. If, if hypothetically, we were in some, you know, fantasy land and we had all the money we needed and we didn't need to allocate this towards something else, where would that money go? Would that money go back to the General Fund? Or what would staff's recommendation be on that money if we were in different financial times?
Well, actually, we don't, it's really just exists on paper because we only got a loan for the amount that we needed for the project. But we're just rightsizing the budget to reflect what we actually received in loan proceeds and then what we actually spent on the project itself. So it's, it's not really available money because we don't have it, it's just rightsizing the budget itself.
Okay, so, but I thought you were removing it. I thought it was basically, you had an additional $139,000. Turns out, you saved $139,000. So I thought you were using that extra $139,000 on something else.
No, if you see in the, on the General Fund side, we had a reduction in revenue and a reduction in expense. So those cancel each other out. And on the capital side, we also reduced revenue and we also reduced expense by the same amount. So those canceled each other out. So there's nothing left available from that particular project.
Okay, thank you. And then my final questions are regarding transportation. And so, so, so two questions. One is, so I saw the LMIG money that's necessary is about $254,000 or so. And so I guess my question for, for Mr. Ralph is, if we were to add, say, $1,000 to that number, does that get us a larger grant? If we add $10,000, $50,000, whatever that number is, does it end up resulting in even more money from the grant? Or is this, is this the amount that we're going to receive, the absolute largest possible grant for resurfacing?
So, yes, they have allocated us about $873,000. I believe that's the max we could get. And this $254,000 number is the absolute minimum necessary match to that number at a 30% level. So if he put in any more, it's not going to get us any more money from GDOT. We are already getting the most we could.
Okay, excellent. And then my final question is, Mr. Ralph as well, and goes off of Councilman Judy's question, which was, which was a good one. So, so basically, at the beginning of the year, staff had told us, and it wasn't you, Mr. Ralph. But, but basically, the public was told and City Council was told that that Hawk would actually be available by April. And so that was something that, that the Administration Department let us know. And is it, is it, did, what changed it from? Because my hope was, it, it's a relatively, relatively speaking, a small number. My hope is we could get that started and even sooner than January, but it sounds like that's not possible from approval standpoint. So does that mean just that, that April was impossible? Or what, what caused such a large change from, from April 2020?
Yes, you're, you're right. I remember myself telling the Administration Department that we could, and, and the City Council actually, back in the day, we could get it ready before the first live in Roswell of 2020. So that's the April 2020. But, but you know, there's always unforeseen situations that could happen as we explore and do the design of these projects. And we obviously do not, you know, create our schedules based on the absolute worst-case scenario. We just give the City Council, you know, a reasonable schedule. So in this case, two things happened. The one major cause of delay was the conflict that got created with the low power lines along one side of Highway 9. So when you're talking about a Hawk, it has overhead signals and, you know, that became a conflict with the power lines. And those are not like the smaller, minor power lines, we're talking major. So that took a long time to coordinate with the Georgia Power Company. That got resolved, and then we had some back and forth delay with GDOT. And then, of course, when the pandemic hit, you know, with the frozen funding and the inavailability and delays at our design consultants and, you know, the Georgia Power Company at GDOT, all of that caused towards extensive delay. But we are almost there. You know, we should be getting the permit from GDOT in the next couple of weeks, we hope. And then we start advertisement, and then we hope to get it ready for a construction contract for the January 2021 committee meeting.
Excellent. Well, Mr. Ralph, thank you for the thorough, thorough explanations. And Mr. Luckett, again, great presentation and looking forward to a, to do a great quarterly review.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Luckett. That was great. Lot of information. Just a couple, couple three questions. One of the things on the hotel motel tax where we came in 40% below Q1. My question is, Q, are those evenly spaced out or evenly calculated as far as what the expectation is for the year? Or did you wait quarter one more heavily? Or, or less, budgeted for less, given the situation? Just trying to get a sense of where it might come in.
It was based off of historical collections by month. And so that's kind of what we based our projections on. So, you know, it's based on a certain percent that we, based on history, we typically collect in that particular month. So that's kind of where we're getting the 40% from.
Okay, thank, thank you. And then, as far as you had mentioned employee compensation, that there were a couple of analysis that were perhaps done. Is that something that you'll be able to share with us? So we have an idea of what those numbers are depending on, on what those options are?
Sure, we can send that to you all if that's helpful.
And then just the last question, and I realize this is probably going to hit quarter two, didn't hit in Q1, is the COVID funding. I imagine that's just going to hit the books as restricted funding. I imagine that's just going to hit the books as restricted funding. Are we going to, and I, and I guess this is another question perhaps from Mayor Henry. We're going to have a work session on those restricted funds and how those will play into quarter two budget.
So just to kind of give you an update on where we're at with that, we actually received our final check from Fulton County today. That gets us to the full allocation of the CARES Act money. And that's on a reimbursement basis. So, you know, we've submitted reimbursement requests to receive those funds from Fulton County. And of course, how those funds end up being used are the decision of Mayor Council. I'm not sure, Mayor Henry, if you want to add anything to that.
Well, I, I would. Up, up until today, we weren't sure when the money would come to us. And that's an entirely different conversation to have. The conversation tonight is first quarterly budget. And I really feel as though the CARES Act funding reimbursements come in probably at the second quarter. We could always have a separate work session on that. But I really think it should be in context, separate, but in context with the second quarter review.
Thank you. Yeah, I realized that as I was starting to ask.
Councilmember Wilsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ryan, to you and your team for a great presentation. Appreciate the high level insight into what's going on nationwide and then also drilling down into what's going on in Roswell. So very much appreciate it. A quick question you had mentioned, I noticed that in the operating additions are several salary positions. And I just wanted to clear some clarification on, on some of the comments about operating funds needed to be sustainable in order to, to, to add those positions. I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification on that and projections going forward.
Sure. So one of the things, like you said, we want to make sure that we're funding recurring items with recurring sources of funding. There was one position that we are recommending, recommending for funding. That's the community development, building plans reviewer position. And, you know, based on that summary that you see on slide 41, we do, in terms of the recurring operating requests, they do fall in line or they're less than the total available recurring funding that we have at this point. So I'm confident that we have the money to support that position moving forward. And if you want any details on the position, I, I think that Alice or Lenore, both of them are available to provide any details on the, the position itself.
Alice, Lenore, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, just, I, this is Lenore. I could just add that we did do an evaluation. The, the position title that we originally brought to council was as a plans reviewer. And it actually was going to serve three purposes. It was going to offer a permit expediting service, an add-on service that we don't currently have now. And then because of the type of service that that provides, this individual needs to be a planner viewer. In addition to that, since we weren't going to actually have the expediting service be 24, you know, during all of our hours of operation, the individual also would have the capability to assist with inspections. That is actually still our same approach, except for the fact that because we are doing everything via email now and going to hopefully very soon be turning our online web portal on, the expedition part just is built into what we're doing. So it's not necessarily a, a major change. It just means that the, the, the new position, we divide the projects up such that those smaller factor turnaround projects would be assigned to that one particular person. And when I ran the evaluation based on kind of industry standards of, of how much time we should be spending on plan reviews, we are short by nearly a full person in just plan review hours. And, and we're compensating by working extra hours and probably spending a little less time on some projects than we should. So that was the reason why we talked to finance about bringing that position forward to you tonight.
Great. Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate that.
So may I say, Lenore, that this is a customer service issue?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's a get the permits reviews turned around in the target timeframe that our department has committed to on a consistent basis. So yes, ma'am.
Well, thank you because I, I appreciate you reacting to the public outcry. And I know that I did read and I passed along to you in next door, there was a gentleman saying it took him four or five weeks to get a permit. So, and I, and I just, I understand the challenges you face. But then the other thing I understand as well, I just had a conversation today with some gentlemen in the industry and home sales are high. It, it's, it's amazing how the economy is reacting to the pandemic because it's not reacting the same way that it did in the Great Recession. So I appreciate the fact that you all are actually remaining very busy. And I look forward to all of the good things to come. Additional comments from council? Seeing no hands up, we've got no one in the queue. So additional comments, if not, we will adjourn. We're adjourned. We will see you at 7:00. Thank you.